Good morning, everyone, and welcome to Committee of the Whole. I am Councilmember Andrew Johnson, chairing the meeting today as Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden is out on city business. We are joined by a quorum of council members today. Councilmember Gordon Bender, Barb Johnson, Quincy Goodman, Frye, and Paul Masano. And today we have a public hearing, 14 items on consent and three discussion items. So go ahead with our consent items. We've got the 12 listed on the agenda, but then two additional walk-on items as this is our last Committee of the Whole meeting of the year. We have, in terms of walk-on items, a request for committee action from the Health Department regarding a memorandum of understanding with children's health care. And we have a resolution by Councilmember Quincy transferring some funds between the City Council and Clerk's office. In addition, on our agenda, we've got 12 consent items. The first is an appointed position to the Human Resources Department, as is the second item. The third is an appointed position of Finance and Property Services. The fifth, or the fourth, is a position to the Police Department. The fifth is a security designations policy. The sixth is a collective bargaining agreement. The seventh is Northern Metals Consent Decree. Eighth is Polling Place Designation Resolution. Ninth is a series of legal settlements. Tenth is an agreement with the FDA. Eleventh is an appointment to the Human Resources Department. And the 12th is support for the Bus Rapid Transit Route on Chicago Emerson Fremont. So go ahead and move those consent items. Are there any questions or thoughts from committee members on those? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. The motion carries. We will go ahead with our public hearing first on the, oh, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to move to amend the agenda to add a discussion item. That would be a new discussion item 14 and move the rest of the discussion items down. And that would be to review a draft 2018 transition calendar. And I'd just speak to that very briefly.
Sure. And you know, we don't need the motion.
I just want to make sure that-
So I'll go ahead and make that change to the agenda. So we'll add the transition calendar on there. And if you'd like to speak on that, certainly, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted the council members to know that you have in front of you a very skeleton version of a 2018 yearly calendar. It highlights the Ward Work Weeks, as well as the City Council and Committee of the Whole meetings, so that you'll have a chance to review that during the public hearing item before it's on the discussion. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Bender. So we will add that as our fourth discussion item behind the minimum wage ordinance study, the youth compact commitments, and the Super Bowl update. With that, we're going to go ahead and start our public hearing on the U-Visa ordinance. Do we have a presentation from staff on this? Yes.
Why, Mr. Chair, you do. And I'll just briefly outline the ordinance provisions. And basically, this ordinance memorializes what the city is already doing, but to make sure that there's continuity, clarity, and that all members of the public are aware of the city's processes. So what are UNT visas? UNT visas apply, were created in the year 2000 as part of the Victims of Trafficking and Violence Prevention Act. The goal is to assist law enforcement in the investigation and prosecution of crimes and human trafficking. And we all know that immigrants, particularly women and children, can be especially vulnerable to crimes of human trafficking, domestic violence, and sexual assault and related crimes. And as set out in the Department of Homeland Security guidance, Congress sought with this act not only to prosecute perpetrators of crimes committed against immigrants, but to strengthen relations between law enforcement and immigrant communities. And so this provision of federal law is very much consistent with the city's own separation ordinance and the goals of that ordinance. For U-Visa eligibility, there's a list of qualifying crimes. You have to have suffered substantial physical or mental abuse, have information about the criminal activity, and that you have been, are, or likely to be helpful in the detection, investigation, and/or prosecution of the eligible crimes. And here's a list of the eligible crimes. T visas are specifically for human trafficking victims. I'm not going to go through the requirements for eligibility for that. They're similar in many ways to the U visa. The certifying eligible agencies within the city of Minneapolis are primarily the Minneapolis Police Department. They get the bulk of the requests for these certifications. Our office, in connection with the most air domestic violence prosecution work, and occasionally the Civil Rights Department, if some of their discrimination investigations touch on some of the eligible crimes. So what's the impact of certification under these forms by one of the certifying city agencies? It's just one piece of the required paperwork to be eligible to apply for this kind of visa. The application is still subject to review and investigation by the immigration authorities. And then you get the right, if you pass all those hurdles, you get the right to apply for an annual lottery. There are 10,000 slots nationwide for the U visa and only 5,000 for T visas. What does this allow you to do? It allows you to remain in the United States for up to four years, and the opportunity, under certain circumstances, to apply for permanent residency. So real quickly, what do these ordinance provisions do? It provides for two tracks of processing. Standard track, and the city has committed to process those within 30 days whenever possible. There could be occasions where we have to obtain an off-site paper file for older cases, where we may need longer. But the city has been doing that, and actually shorter than that. I think even the Police Department has mostly processed these within 14 days. And the expedited track is for victims or family members in, actually in removal proceedings, to try to process those within 14 days or as soon as reasonably possible. The ordinance also makes information about the standard and expedited certification processing tasks easily accessible to the public in multiple languages and providing a link on our website. The ordinance does not take away, and in fact requires, that the certifying individuals who sign these forms under penalty of prosecution by the federal government must still exercise their sound discretion and judgment, taking into consideration all relevant facts. The ordinance contains, in deciding whether a victim has been helpful or not, a provision with a rebuttable presumption of helpfulness, as long as the victim has not unreasonably refused to cooperate or unreasonably failed to provide information. And this is language straight out of the federal regulations. But not the rebuttable presumption, but those characteristics. Again, it would be subject to the discretion of the certifying official. The final provision deals with data privacy and provides that city employees shall not disclose personal information of victims obtained through the UNT visa certification process, except as required, obviously, by the State Data Practices Act, other laws, or court order. And that's just a short summary, unless anyone has any questions. That's a good summary.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Ms. Siegel. I'm very supportive of this change. I just, I'm looking for a little bit more clarity on what the change entails. You know, U visas already exist. There's kind of a certain number of them that are in existence. It's not increasing the number of U visas available. This is just easing the process in which they're provided, or?
Mr. Chair and Councilmember Frye, that's exactly right. This is to memorialize in ordinance the process and procedures and to make, we have not had a link on our website so far. We are creating one. We are creating a protocol. So it's really to formalize and set out clearly in ordinance what the expectations are of the city in this area. And do you have further questions, or?
Yeah. So we're formalizing the process in ordinance. Is that process different from what the federal government already requires or has?
Mr. Chair and Councilmember Frye, the two differences between what is in our ordinance and what federal law and regulations currently provide is we're creating formally in ordinance, this two-track, having a standard and an expedited process.
Okay.
And then self-imposing these deadlines of 30 days and 14 days. That is not in-
Okay.
-federal law. And then also setting out this rebuttable definition of a rebuttable presumption and the expectation-
Okay, okay.
...for certifying officials. So those would be the three distinctions between what's provided in existing federal law and regulations and what is contained in this ordinance.
So it formalizes the expedited process. Do we have instances in the city where we're not able to get, where presently we don't get a U visa to these individuals within the prescribed period of time, and therefore we're formalizing it to make sure that that doesn't happen again?
Mr. Chair and Councilmember Frye, I believe now, I know the Police Department places a priority on these. I know our office, I think we pretty much do things within 14 days now.
Right.
But it's nice setting out for the public-
Understood.
-what the expectations are and communicating that, and just making clear who to go to, how to most quickly access this service from the city.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
And then, I think the chief wanted to say a word.
Chief, yes, please.
Chair and committee members, and I think this Councilmember Frye might speak to your point. From an organizational standpoint, we had this process primarily, it was sitting in our Special Crimes Division, that along with all the other investigative casework they had to do. So I have officially removed that from that division for a couple of things. The individuals who are impacted by this here, I don't want them to be victimized twice. And the respect and dignity that they deserve needs to be dealt with in a manner. So we have officially assigned Lieutenant Giovanni Delise, who's here, who will now, that will be his primary responsibility, and both looking at the U visa and making sure both through the standard and expedited process that it happens, but also at the same time building out that trust and legitimacy and that we want with our communities. And so it will touch upon more than just U visas. It'll really touch upon how we can really build, as a police department, our relationships with our immigrant and undocumented community. So from an organizational standpoint, that is different as of Monday from our Police Department, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Additional questions from committee members? Not seeing any. Thank you, Chief. Before I go ahead and open the hearing, I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmembers Conow and Reich. And also, I neglected to mention at the beginning of the meeting, we're joined by two incoming Councilmember-elect Jeremy Schrader and Steve Fletcher. Thank you for being here today. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. We've got six speakers signed up. If you're interested in speaking on this, please go over to the clerk here and sign in. If you could keep your comments to two minutes as well, we've got a timer here for that because of all the number of items on our meeting. That would be appreciated. Our first speaker is Danielle, and followed by Jamie Long. And for the record, when you speak, please state your full name and address.
Sure. Good morning, members of the council. My name is Danielle Robinson Briand. I'm testifying here today as a Minneapolis resident and small business owner here. I live in the 13th Ward, near Badama Casca, and my immigration law firm is on Lake Street. For the past two years, I've been a member of the Minnesota Immigrant Rights Action Committee, as well as a member of the Minnesota Dakotas Chapter of the American Immigration Lawyers Association. My law practice focuses predominantly on deportation defense. In that vein, I express my full support for the proposed UNT visa certification ordinance. My remarks, though, are limited to what I see as the value for potential beneficiaries of the U visa program, because that's where most of my experience resides. The U visa is one of the very few humanitarian immigration benefits that we have in our otherwise restrictive immigration system. The program was designed by Congress in 2000 to legalize the status of undocumented immigrants who are disproportionately impacted by violent crime in the U.S., but who are reticent to report those crimes or follow through with the ensuing investigations and prosecutions. The overriding reason that undocumented immigrants fail to report and prosecute crimes is their fear that an encounter with law enforcement will lead to their deportation. It is common in the immigrant community to conflate local police, for example, with officers of Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE, or think that they are serving the same agenda to remove them from our communities. This credence is not without justification, as we are well aware here in Hennepin County of the cozy relationship that can exist between local law enforcement, and I'm speaking specifically about the Hennepin County Sheriff, and the federal immigration agents, to the extreme detriment of our immigration, immigrant community. Congress designed the U visa program with the specific intent of correcting the social problem of the underreporting of crime experienced by undocumented immigrants. The enactment of the U visa is owed in significant part to the advocacy of domestic violence and sexual assault organizations who lobbied tirelessly to create a benefit that encouraged public safety for immigrants. I do have a little bit more, and I would ask for a little bit more time because I have-
If you could wrap up, that would be-
Okay. So what I'd like to say is that, okay, I would like to try to continue, so.
If you could finish up your thoughts, that'd be-
One of the distinctions that I do want to make for the council that I think may or may not be completely obvious is that this ordinance has to do with the certification itself. And putting it into an ordinance makes it a lot more predictable of a process and really reduces the abuse of discretionary authority in the certification process. So it's important to note that without guidance for the Police Department that's formalized in some way, it does leave open the possibility to abuse that discretion, and that does happen a lot in the community, not only in Minnesota, but nationally. It's a national problem. The point is that we need to support victims of crimes. They're coming to the Police Department to seek a certification, which is a requirement for the U visa to even be submitted. And there are patterns of abusive discretion, and so we encourage the adoption of this because the certification itself is a necessary component to this immigration benefit.
Thank you.
And so that's the end of my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jamie, followed by Gloria.
Jamie Long, Deputy Chief of Staff for Congressman Keith Ellison, 2100 Plymouth Avenue North, Minneapolis. Thank you so much for the invitation to testify today. The congressman wishes he could be here, but he's fighting to keep the government open right now. So he sent me in his place. Minneapolis has always been a real leader on the U visas in the state and the region, and the congressman sent a letter in support of the ordinance today that I'd like to read. Dear Minneapolis City Council, I am writing to express my support of the proposed U visa ordinance that would ensure that certifying entities, like the city of Minneapolis, process U visa documents in a timely manner and consistently apply the intent of federal law. The U visa is available for non-citizens who have suffered mental or physical abuse or are otherwise a victim of a crime, and whose support can mean the difference in law enforcement agencies' ability to investigate and prosecute criminal activity. Violence against non-citizen victims impacts the whole community, and the cooperation from these victims makes it possible to both redirect violent offenders and achieve justice for victims of crimes. The ordinance we are discussing today would ensure timely processing of the certification request, allowing the U visa application to continue to the U.S. Customs and Immigration Service. In March 2014, I hosted a panel discussion to educate local elected officials on the importance of the U visa and encourage them to examine the certification process in their respective police departments. Two victims of domestic violence graciously shared their stories of applying for and receiving the U visa and the impact that it has made on their families. Our current federal immigration system has also only heightened anxieties among members of our community. Instead of pursuing badly needed comprehensive immigration reform, our federal government has dramatically expanded its enforcement of broken and unjust laws against the broader interests of our nation. Aggressive immigration enforcement and rising rates of deportation actually undermine public safety, as undocumented Americans feel even more afraid to come forward when they themselves are victims of crimes. And this climate initiatives like the U visa program are even more important to ensuring all are protected. I commend the hard work of community members, lawyers, and advocates who have continued to bring attention to the issue of U visas and non-citizen crime victims. I would like to offer a special thank you to Council Vice President Glidden for introducing the ordinance, and to Representatives Dean Hornstein, Omar Clark, May Quaid, and Senator Pappas for also introducing a U visa bill in the 2017 legislative session. Victims of violence should never be in fear of sharing their trauma because of their status. The city of Minneapolis has a duty to protect all those who live here, regardless of immigration status, and the proposed U visa ordinance is a crucial step to continuing that work. Thank you for the ordinance today. Sincerely, Congressman Ellison.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thanks. We have Gloria, followed by Adriana.
Good morning, every member of the council. My name is Gloria Velazquez. I'm Mexican and I'm 35 years old living in the United States.
My name is Gloria Velazquez. I'm a Mexican national, and I've been living here for 35 years.
I want to tell you a little about my story. I was attacked strongly and was hurt.
I'd like to share a little of my story. I was assaulted violently, and I have been very impacted by it.
Now I'm a beneficiary of a visa U.
I'm a U visa beneficiary.
And I want to ask you to look at how sometimes people need your help.
And I would like to encourage you to understand that people who are impacted need your help and support.
When I was attacked, people just like yourselves helped me and supported me. I didn't want to make a report to the police because I was afraid of being deported. And I had a horrible crisis. I was sick. I had to go to a psychiatrist. I had to go to the doctors to convince me that nothing would happen if I admitted what they had done to me.
I suffered a psychological crisis and had to go to doctors and was encouraged by them to follow through with a complaint against those who had harmed me.
I cooperated with the process and I filed a complaint. And I'm thankful that the Minneapolis Police Department certified my law enforcement certification for the U visa. And there are people who are attacked terribly and aren't being protected. At least I'm protected, so I'm here.
There are many people just like myself who have been assaulted or harmed, but they aren't protected like I fortunately am.
And now, thank God and thanks to all of you, and thanks to the U visa, I'm able to come out of the shadows. And I want to ask you to pay a little attention to those people who are hurt and who don't have any protection and to vote yes to pass this visa U.
I'm sorry, I missed part of that because I was thinking about the time, but she, can you just repeat it?
I'm asking you to pay a little attention to the people who are attacked and who don't have any protection and to vote yes to pass this visa U.
I would like for you to focus your thoughts and be mindful for the people who are affected by crime and who have been assaulted, and that you can advance something in their favor to help them.
Because they don't even have any protection. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Adriana, followed by Julio.
I'm Adriana Cerrillo. My name is Adriana Cerrillo, and I'm a Minneapolis resident and also a member of MIRA. And I just wanted to clarify something. MIRA, we're not an organization. We are an action committee group, and no one gets paid. We're all volunteers. So our passion for social justice is very real. You know, a lot of us have taken, and always take, time out of our work to be present and to do what is in our heart. I just wanted to make that clarification. And also, creating the sanctuary platform was a way to bring solutions to the needs of our community. And the item of the U visa that came out of a very tragic situation, I don't know how many of you have seen the video, it went viral about Ariel Lopez, Vences Lopez. He was questioned in the light rail. This happened here, in our own backyard, whether he was legal or not. He was questioned by the Metro Transit Police. I don't know if you're, okay, thank you. So some of you are aware of that. So MIRA, we organized, and we were able to get him out of the detention center. And unfortunately, we found a lot of, you know, missing links in the system. And he was actually denied an interpreter, and he was self-deported. But thank goodness, we have an incredible member of MIRA, that is Attorney Danielle Bryant, and she did her work pro bono to help him out, to get him out. And also, thanks to the leadership of, at the time, Deputy Chief Rondo, now our current chief, he was very instrumental, and also Commander Forbes at the time, to get the certification for Ariel Lopez and to get him out. So thank you for your leadership and doing what was right. And passing this ordinance is an opportunity for the city to prove itself to our community. And going back to the question that Councilmember Frye had, we went from not having a policy written from the Department of Police to a city ordinance written. That is bravo, incredible, beautiful. So I'm urging all of you to vote yes, to prove that you care about our community, because at this time, we don't want any more resolutions. We want action. And this is an incredible opportunity for those of you to prove yourselves that you do care. So thank you.
Thank you. We've got Julio, followed by Tom. Welcome.
Hello, good morning, members of the council. My name is Julio Martinez.
Good morning. My name is Julio.
Martinez. I live in Minneapolis.
I live in Minneapolis.
I'm here to support the ordinance in front of you. I work with immigration lawyers and I'm also a member of an organization called Sembrando Poder. I've realized the needs that our community has.
I see the need that our community has.
Many in our community have fear of reporting crimes that they suffer. There was a case last year of a woman that was suffering from domestic violence. She spent several years with violence.
She was afraid of filing for a police report.
And what she was hit with was a blow to her head and her children died.
What ended up happening is that her husband shot her and killed her two kids, and then committed suicide.
Unfortunately- Ah, lamentablemente ella no perdió la vida, este, está en recuperación y este, ese, quiero que vean el problema que hay, que la comunidad no tiene confianza de hacer reportes a la policía porque tienen miedo.
Fortunately, she didn't lose her life, she's still fighting and she's going through a long period of recovering. But what we want you to see is that there is fear in the community and that the...
Tienen miedo a este, hacer reportes a la policía.
They're afraid of filing for police reports and reporting.
Si ustedes pasan esta ordenanza, este, van a crear confianza con nuestra comunidad.
If you pass this resolution, you will gain the trust from our community.
Este, ese es uno de los pocos testimonios que hay de, de los abusos que sufren nuestra comunidad.
This is one of the many testimonies that you will find in our community.
También nuestra comunidad ha sido agredida en las calles y no hacen reportes porque les da miedo, entonces no hay esa confianza y queremos que el departamento de Minneapolis este, nos ayude a tener confianza con los policías.
There's also many people being aggravated in the cities of Minneapolis and we need the help from the city to help us report these crimes.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Tom. I have no other speakers on this list, so if you're interested, please sign up with the city clerk. Oh, sounds like we might have another. All right.
Thank you. My name is Tom Hague. I'm the Chair of the Immigrant Welcoming Committee at Plymouth Congregational Church, which is in the eighth ward. I'd like to read a letter that I have signed. It's also been signed by Sherri Presteman, Conference Minister at the Minnesota Conference of the United Church of Christ, Skylar Dorr, Students for a Democratic Society at the University of Minnesota, Daniel Romero of the Interfaith Coalition on Immigration, Kim DeFranco of the Welfare Rights Committee, Michelle Gross of the Citizens United Against Police Brutality, and Angelica Bello, of the Interracial Student Movement. Dear Minneapolis City Council, the Minnesota Immigrant Rights Action Committee, MIRAC, and its allies fight for full equality for immigrants and an end to deportations. As an immigrant-led advocacy organization, MIRAC and its allies have personally witnessed the hardship that crime victims face when they are caught up in the U visa certification process. If U visa certifications don't happen, or if they don't happen fast enough, Minneapolis residents who otherwise qualify for U visas are deported. In September this year, MIRAC introduced a Sanctuary Now Platform for the city of Minneapolis that included guaranteed certification by the Minneapolis Police Department of all qualifying U visa applicants, applications, and the adoption of an expedited process for people in deportation proceedings. Violent crimes perpetuated against immigrants are a real problem in Minneapolis and have a reliable, having a reliable U visa certification program will also combat impunity by encouraging immigrants to report crimes and participate in the prosecution. We fully support U visa ordinance put forth by Councilmember Elizabeth Clinton, which takes needed steps to streamline and bring greater accountability to the U visa process. We urge the council to approve the U visa ordinance. Just speaking, okay, I'll stop there, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. I'm gonna ask our clerk, do we have any additional speakers signed up? Just one more, all right, and perfect. Nice to meet you, all right, thanks.
My name is Sonia Ortega, I'm here in support of the ordinance that you have in front of you. What I wanted to mention to you is that when an immigrant, an undocumented immigrant is victim of a crime, most of the times they don't report them because they're afraid that they are going to be prosecuted also in the, at the same time. My brother-in-law was pulled over almost a year ago for a traffic violation, he was taken into custody, and then he was, he was taken by immigration immediately after he was detained. We found out in the process that he did qualify for a U visa, but because he was already in immigration and he was, he had a case that he had to fight with the city of St. Paul, and the federal government had taken him because immigration is federal, and then we had a case with the state. He was lost in the two systems. We couldn't get a U visa approved and he was in detention with immigration. At the same time, he had a case with the city of Minneapolis and we couldn't find him the right representation, we had a hard time dealing with attorneys, we had a hard time getting access to him with his attorneys. So, you end up making deals that don't necessarily work for us and that are not right. And what we find that has been happening is that before we are prosecuted, we're already being condemned, because you are not given the chance of going through the due process. So, what this would do for us is that it would expedite what, the system that is already in place, it would just make it faster for everybody, and it would help us a lot on getting at least a fair trial when you have to fight in the state court without being transferred to the federal court. I hope that you understand everything that I said, but we are not given the opportunity to go through the process. We're just detained and we're deported immediately, and a lot of people are being deported when they would have the opportunity to stay. And these are good citizens that would have to go through the process and we would have to prove that they are eligible and they are not criminals that would be staying in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional speakers? Additional speakers? Any additional speakers? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. I do have a note of clarification that in our presentation, it mentioned that this was a, for the expedited a process within 14 days, it's actually seven days. And so that is what will be reflected in the ordinance and the posted presentation on the city website reflects that as well. And I appreciate the clarification from Susan Segal. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move passage of this ordinance and see if there's any discussion among my colleagues. Any discussion? Any discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
I just want to take a moment to thank everybody who came in and testified, it was clear there was a lot of support for this, and I think that increased our understandings of why it's so important, so thank you for coming in and speaking.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? We'll just mention that even though Council Vice President Clinton is not here today, she's extremely supportive of this obviously, has brought this forward, and I want to thank her and her staff and all of the partners throughout the community and within our own city enterprise, including the police department, for their work on this. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, the motion carries and that ordinance is passed. So, we will move on to our discussion items. The first is a contract with the Minneapolis Federal Reserve Bank for an economic impact study of the city's minimum wage ordinance. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members, my name is Jeff Schneider, I'm with the city coordinator's office, and I have been assisting with the RFP process for this economic impact study. As you recall, last June, the ordinance you passed directed the city coordinator to report back annually on the impact of the minimum wage ordinance beginning in 2019, the year after enactment. Working with a staff team from CPED, Finance, Civil Rights, along with research staff from DED and the Department of Revenue, we issued an RFP for this work in early October and received four proposals. On behalf of the proposal review team, I am very pleased to recommend that the city engage the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis to do this work. We are recommending the Fed team for several reasons. Minneapolis Fed has a decades-long reputation for first-rate economic research. Their project team includes three highly qualified economists who will be principal investigators. In addition, the bank has a deep bench of research economists from which to draw upon, as well as access to national researchers via their new Opportunity and Inclusive Growth Institute. The Fed's proposal was judged to be rigorous and responsive to the city's RFP, both by city staff and by the two-state agency representative who assisted us in this determination. In some cases, it goes beyond the city's RFP, for example, by offering to host two national conferences on the subject of minimum wages in the next four years.
Hold on just one second, I think we have a question from Councilmember Pomisano.
Not a question, just want to speak after him, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, please continue.
The Federal Reserve Bank was the only proposal by a local entity. This will facilitate communications with the city, the three state agency partners, and with local stakeholders. The Federal Reserve Bank is perceived to be a credible research entity by both the business and labor representatives we consulted with. It is also experienced, highly experienced in dealing with sensitive private data, which is highly important to the three state agencies who will be assisting us. Finally, unlike the three other proposals, the bank is offering to underwrite their entire cost for this four-year study, estimated to be $770,000 with its own resources. There will be some ancillary costs for state agency, technical assistance, and custom survey work to be supported by the city. Nerea, who is not here because she's ill today by the way, Nerea and I would like to thank our RFP and review team members from CPED, Mark Brenda, and Andrew Dahl from Finance, Micah Intermill, from Civil Rights, Velma Corvell, and an additional member from the city coordinator's office, Peter Ebbinett. I would also like to publicly thank the research staff from DED and the Department of Revenue who assisted us in developing the RFP and who will be providing technical assistance throughout the project. Also, the Department of Human Services has offered to assist us in tracking the potential impact of minimum wage increases on the usage rates of various public benefit programs. I'll just divert from my remarks to say there has been no other study that has the participation of three state agencies nationally. We believe that the combination of a first-rate research entity like the Fed, working with our three state agency partners, will result in a multi-year study that will be credible to all stakeholders and have national as well as local import. But that'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to lift some of this work up, you know, it's, to share some of the conversation that Jeff Schneider and I had yesterday, it's, it's all too rare that policymakers actually take the time to look at and also provide the resources for the long-term economic impact of the laws that we pass. So, I'm really proud that colleagues agreed when I worked to add this to our minimum wage ordinance conversation, and I want to thank Councilmember Quincy because he helped us to find funding for it as we moved this ordinance forward earlier this year with overwhelming support, so thank you. Like many policies at all levels of government, there's a redistribution effect of the minimum wage ordinance. The money for a minimum wage increase comes from other people, sometimes customers, sometimes business owners, sometimes through reduced hours or potentially reduced workers. So, it's going to take a sophisticated analysis of the local and regional economy to figure out how the relative impacts of this balance out over time. As Mr. Schneider had mentioned to me yesterday, most of the minimum wage studies across our country focus on state-level policies instead of cities. Only two cities that we know of have initiated their own post-adoption impact studies, that's Seattle and Los Angeles. And only Seattle's study, which as you know, there's two competing reports have been completed thus far. There are a lot of studies on projected impact, but this is actually to track our impact as we move forward. So, you know, there's, the interest here is that we have our city's active support as demonstrated by this staff direction and this funding and by the participation of the state agencies that Mr. Schneider mentions. It's really gonna bring access to key data, and this level of data is going to be incredibly important for a meaningful look, for example, micro-employment information, and there's still some barriers we're gonna need to work to overcome here, and thankfully, we've had Jeff Schneider in charge of this, and I am confident he's going to find a way. So, we just, we have a really first-rate research facility here, entity, the Federal Reserve, working with this. And there's a lot of people that think this is going to be not just credible to all stakeholders, but also have national and local importance. So, shared with me the other day were comments from Michelle Welch from the Arnold Foundation, and I just wanted to share a couple of those. She was super excited, saying this is important not just for our city, but for these kinds of efforts across the country, and specifically, she says, "I hope you take a bit of time to celebrate this really exciting outcome." And also that this result is going to be the path-breaking, rigorous, and highly policy-relevant study, so, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just, I really want to say this is obviously one of the benefits we have of having a Federal Reserve location in our, in our city, and to have that, the gravitas that they have, I think is really, really important. And I will just say, they did some fantastic work on foreclosures and just really in-depth research, and then also, you know, held numerous conferences here about the foreclosure issue and, and also housing market studies, that kind of thing, and so, I just think this is a great opportunity and it'll be a national story and a national model, and again, we're delighted they decided to have a regional location in our city.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask, as we set up the study parameters, we may imagine that other jurisdictions around us, I know, are already looking at raising the wage and are likely to do so in the future, particularly the city of St. Paul, is, and I, so I would assume this study would be set up for us to be able to potentially expand the scope to other jurisdictions if they want to participate in the study, or will the study be able to incorporate the sort of cumulative effects of wage policies that may spread through our region?
Mr. Chair and Councilmember Bender, I, the Fed being local is very aware of what's going on regionally, and it will be up to them, of course, to decide if they want to, how they want to incorporate St. Paul or any other locality that changes their local minimum wage ordinance. But one of the advantages of them being here is they understand what's going on locally and regionally, and I'm sure will be paying close attention to whatever happens in St. Paul, so.
Perfect. Well, maybe I'll follow up after with some detailed questions about just the, particularly this first phase of the baseline data, so I can understand how that will incorporate the regional view.
Sure, be happy to come see you, sure.
Any additional discussion? Additional discussion? Well, I wanted to echo the sentiment of my colleagues and say thank you to staff and thank you to the Federal Reserve for stepping up on this, I think we couldn't have asked for a better partner with this study. So, seeing no further discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and move authorizing a contract with the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis in the amount of $50,000 for an economic impact study of the minimum wage ordinance from January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2021. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in approval, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the motion carries, thank you. Go ahead and move on to our next discussion item, the Minneapolis Youth Compact Commitments. We have a brief presentation by staff, welcome, Mrs. Cam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I'm Gretchen Musikant, Commissioner of Health for the city, I'm also co-chair, along with the city attorney Segal of the youth cabinet, and I would like to begin my remarks also by thanking Nigel Perrow, who's on staff at the Health Department as our youth development coordinator, who provides staff support for the cabinet. And continuing the thanks, I want to thank both Councilmember Gordon and especially Councilmember Quincy for leadership on the youth cabinet and participating in our work over time. So, the youth cabinet is an internal group of staff and elected leaders that was created by a council resolution to catalyze and coordinate city enterprise efforts to promote the well-being of children and youth. One of several goals of the health, of the youth cabinet is to coordinate the city's role in the multi-jurisdictional youth coordinating boards called Action and Youth Compact. And so there will be a resolution before you as soon as I finish my brief remarks that lays out the city's commitment for that compact, and I want to point out that the items there align very closely with priorities with... with priorities within our Minneapolis Comp Plan that is now being finalized. So there's a lot of confluence in a positive way. And we expect that we will come back in the first quarter of 2018 to give a more complete report of the Youth Cabinet's action. So I want to stop there, and I, I believe that Councilmember Quincy will talk about the resolution.
All right, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, for being a co-chair of this. This is something that was started back in 2011 when Councilmember Gordon and I recognized the importance of elevating and putting a youth lens on the work that the city does within the city. So that's where we created the Youth Cabinet. And one of the things we did in the Youth Cabinet was made sure where this wasn't in conflict or in duplication of what the Youth Coordinating Board does. But we wanted to make sure internally, the city was focused on what we were doing within our departments, and we created this Youth Cabinet that has met regularly. And we also had to bring in the Youth Coordinating Board as a contributing member of that. So I wanted to thank and acknowledge Ms. Andegroot for being a part of the, the work that we've been doing for these past seven years or so, six years. So it seems like a, a long time coming, but this is a continued support of the Youth Coordinating Board. And so I just wanted to read the resolution briefly. Whereas as part of the Minneapolis Youth Coordinating Board's call to action, each of the partner jurisdictions sign on to a compact for Minneapolis children and young people. Whereas this compact outlines specific commitments made by each jurisdiction for ongoing work and summarizes plans for future investments in line with the mission of the Minneapolis Youth Coordinating Board to promote the health, safety, education, and development of Minneapolis's children and young people. So be further resolved, the City Council of the City of Minneapolis, City supports the compact commitments of the five specific areas of action, including well-being, safety, housing, employment, and engagement. And that's the resolution that we'll be bringing forward for Friday's consideration. But I wanted to highlight its continued work of what the Youth Coordinating Board is doing and the City of Minneapolis is taking on as that role of lead agency, making sure the other jurisdictions share those kind of mission and goals. So thank you for your work, Commissioner Musikant, Susan Siegel, our city attorney, and of course, Andegroot, Youth Coordinating Board Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. I'm going to take that as a motion, the passage of resolution. So is there any discussion on that by colleagues? Any discussion? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Musikant. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed, the motion carries. We are moving on to our next discussion item, the Super Bowl update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members. I'm Pat Born. I'm a consultant in the City Coordinator's Office. You would normally expect to see the city coordinator. Today, he's asked me to stand in for him. He's, of course, taller, smarter, and far more dashing than I. So I, I ask for your indulgence on all of those things today. We're in front of you today because the Super Bowl planning work is coming to its end and the operational work is beginning. But before that starts, we wanted to do an overview for you on what this event is and tell you a little bit more about what's coming. The council has taken a number of actions to support this event, starting with in April, the funding agreement between the city and the host committee. And then a number of other actions have been taken as well. Our expectation at this point is to not bring other actions in front of you, although we can't promise that that won't happen. First up today is Maureen Bosch, who is the president and CEO of the Minnesota Super Bowl Host Committee. The city and the host committee, along with many other jurisdictions throughout the metairie, have been working in very close cooperation with the host committee. And our relationship has been very good and very supportive. Maureen will give you an overview of the events and the activations, particularly in Minneapolis. I'll then give a very brief overview of other city departments. Chief Arredondo will talk about public safety. And Public Works Director Hutchison will talk about transportation and mobility. All right.
Welcome.
Thanks, Pat, and thank you very much. I'm, again, Maureen Bosch, CEO of the Minnesota Super Bowl Host Committee. And I've met with many of you, and, and some of you are up to speed on many of, on many of these topics around the Super Bowl, but I did want to review them formally with all of you. So it's pretty exciting, and we only have 52 days left until we see many, many people from around the world coming to Minneapolis. There'll be over 5,000 media. There'll be guests from 130 countries. We have a group of volunteers, 11,000 actually, that are so excited. If the Vikings make it into the game, I don't know that they will be able to contain themselves. So we're very lucky because our team is doing well. But a little bit about the Super Bowl. We are a 501(c)(6). Our job was to raise private funds to host the Super Bowl. We are not the NFL. We are locally run. We have a staff of 30, almost entirely Minnesotans. We are the link between the city, the state, the NFL, and hundreds of organizations that we've been working with throughout the year. And we have an agreement with the city to contribute nearly $5 million towards the costs of public works and public safety, as you know. Our mission is, is very important to us, and we want to use this beautiful new stadium to introduce Minnesota, the authentic Bold North, reflect our diverse and innovative culture of our state by creating a really a preeminent Super Bowl experience that delivers on our promises and generates a significant economic impact for our state. Most importantly, provides a lasting legacy for Minnesota. So the Bold North has caught on a little bit, and we like to refer to ourselves as a Bold North. We can't hide February, so we might as well enjoy it and brand it. Again, as I mentioned, we will have several, several groups in the market over the 10-day Super Bowl experience. It begins January 26th. 1 million visitors or visits. Some of them will come twice, we hope. Some of them will come every day. 400 million economic impact, that's a conservative estimate. If we don't get a blizzard, people can get here. We're optimistic that we'll make that. 500 million in earned media, we're well on our way. We hope to see a long-term effect that our strategy was modeled after Indianapolis, who has successfully seen a 20% increase in business conventions and other large events since their Super Bowl. We began the year, the day after the Super Bowl ended, in Houston with a 52-week marketing campaign for Minneapolis or Minnesota. And most important element of that was our 52 weeks of giving. Each week on Tuesday, we have given a grant to an organization throughout the state. We are the Minnesota Super Bowl, so we've tried to reach every corner of the state. By the time the game rolls around February 4th, we will have given over $5 million in grants. These are just a few of the Minneapolis organizations that received grants. There's more to come in the next few weeks because we brought it home to Minneapolis. In addition to the grants that the host committee gives, the NFL will do quite a few fundraisers the week of Super Bowl. You'll see them all over town. Our grants, we were very careful that 80% of our grants were given to organizations serving children in poverty, and 70% serve children of color. One of the most fun things I have done in the three years that I have been with the Super Bowl Host Committee was this morning. And when we went to, when I went to my first Super Bowl in Arizona, you tour the stadium on Friday, Future Cities. And we saw this team practicing. They were getting all the camera angles. They were all suited up, and they were a high school team. And we asked about it, and they said, "Well, they choose one high school, one very special high school that goes out and pretends they're the Super Bowl team, and they get to practice." So we campaigned with the NFL to choose North High School. And this morning, the kids found out. They went absolutely wild. And they don't even truly understand what the experience will be like, but they will be the only ones in the stadium before the game. They will pretend they're the Super Bowl team. They'll have their pictures taken from all different angles, the coin toss and National Anthem. It's really a cool experience, and they, they totally deserve it. So we are now calling them the Bold North Polers. And they've agreed. They're, they're wonderful kids, and they're very well-deserving, as is their coach, Chuck Adams. We have, as I mentioned, the most wonderful group of volunteers. 30,000 applied, 15,000 came in for interviews, 10,000-plus were selected. They were, they are being dressed by Target in these beautiful, warm outfits. And they are so enthusiastic. They're being trained in many different areas of the Super Bowl, including safety and security, and anti-human trafficking, and some other very important things. But they are the first hello. They're the first impression people will get of Minnesota, and they are certainly the most important element of the Super Bowl because they create the experience. They come from all over. I just shot the Minnesota map, but actually, they're coming from all over the country. 90% are Minnesotans, but they do come from all over. They love this experience. We actually did our first rally a few weeks ago at the Excel Center in St. Paul, and we planned and budgeted for 8,900 of our 10,000 to come. We had 12,000 show up. I think they brought their friends and relatives in the next, it, it was absolutely amazing. They, they are so excited, and I know they're going to represent us very, very well. We also have a Business Connect program. This is an NFL program. It's a supplier diversity program. It's, this program serves as a conduit between diverse companies in Minnesota who can, are capable of competing for NFL contracts, host committee contracts, sponsor contracts. We've had this site up and the resource guide available for over a year. They've been receiving business development training. They need to be certified, and they are certified. There are over 400 companies in the database right now. These are just a few of the Minneapolis companies that have been getting contracts. We've been using this group for over a year, but there's still much more to come. I believe the NFL tailgate announced the other day, most, 100% of their food vendors are from the Business Connect program. So that was pretty exciting for them. As your city attorney knows, we have a very well-organized group of 40 different community organizations that have been working on anti-human trafficking. One of our chairs, Marilyn Carlson Nelson, is a global leader in this area. So we convened a group of wonderful Minnesotans, Terry Williams, John Choi, Amanda Kuna-Jahara, service providers, law enforcement, survivors and advocates, businesses, and the faith community with four goals: to increase public awareness, prevent and disrupt buyers and sellers, enhance service for victims, and develop a reputable, a reputable model. They have done a marvelous job. Our volunteers are being trained according to their instructions. The industry is being informed with meetings through January, and Atlanta has asked for our plan. So quickly to rundown Super Bowl week. It begins at 4:00 on January 26th, Nicollet Mall, with a concert by some wonderful Minnesotans, but a special appearance by Idina Menzel singing Frozen. Because again, we can't hide February, so we might as well lean into it. The next morning, the Super Bowl Experience will open in the Minneapolis Convention Center. That is two and a half times as large as Nickelodeon Universe, same price point. It is an absolute fabulous attraction built around football. The teams arrive on Sunday. Opening night is on Monday night. That is at the Excel Center. Doors open at 5:30. The media party is Tuesday night. That's where we entertain those 5,000 media, although they will be in town from Friday on, many of them. Our Business Connect Gala, celebrating these diverse businesses, is Wednesday evening. Thursday, many of the gamegoers come in. So those first six days, we, we really market to the Midwest and to Canada. Anywhere there's a football fan. And we know, I know from my experience, it's very easy to attract people to this community. It's a wonderful place to visit. So we are marketing for the first six days. There's plenty of hotel rooms. There's plenty to do to that group. Thursday, the gamegoers come in, and you'll see concerts and partner events and several other activities on Thursday, beginning Thursday. Friday, NFL Honors is at Northrop Auditorium on the 3rd. That is really their award night. It's televised, and it will showcase our beautiful new Northrop. And then, of course, on Sunday is Game Day. The kickoff is at 5:30. And there'll be plenty of activity before that in downtown Minneapolis. So one of the, one of the things that the NFL allows a host committee in a city to do is to showcase itself and to use a platform that the NFL gives us to showcase what we are known best for. So we have chosen to do that on Nicollet Mall with something called Super Bowl Live. And it will go from 12th Street to 6th Street. As you can see, the convention center is the home of the experience, the Super Bowl experience. And then we transition down to 12th and go all the way to 6th with activations that support and promote Minnesota. The hours are listed here. On weekdays, we don't open until 4:00 o'clock, for the most part, except for Friday the 2nd, and that's in order to allow businesses to run as smoothly as possible. And we try to close between 9:00 or 10:00 each evening. It will not run late. On weekends, we are closed. We are open all, all day, 10 to 10, or 10 to 9:00. This is, this is a hard slide to read, but basically, we start at PB Plaza with a wonderful activation of skating and a fandome. And it was, it was our goal to have indoor/outdoor experiences all down Nicollet Mall because people need to step in and get warm. So one of the first indoor activations is in PB Plaza. Listed here is PB Park, but it is PB Plaza. And it's a fandome that holds 400 people. You go in and you can follow a player from when they start training camp all the way through the game, and it's warm and it's 360 degrees. It's, it's very cool. And then as you move down the street, you'll see many opportunities for guests to be entertained and many indoor experiences, as well as outdoor experiences. There'll be several media organizations. This is an arch that will be on the corner of 12th that kind of starts out the Nicollet Mall experience. And this is the big larger-than-life ice sculpture that will be down on, around 6th Street. We'll have several larger-than-life ice sculptures. We have photo op warming benches. We need to represent every one of the 32 teams, so we're putting their jerseys in ice up and down Nicollet Mall. Snow globe photo ops by Hallmark and Hundy. And then we have this wonderful ice stage. That will be at the corner of the Dayton Project on Nicollet and 8th. And you might have read about the fact that we, we asked Jimmy Jam and Terry Lewis to come home and to help us orchestrate a phenomenal lineup of Minnesota sound. And they gladly did it. They are two of the most wonderful Minnesotans that I've ever met. And we will start out, as you can see, this is our lineup. They've themed each day differently, and I won't go into all the details, but these, we start out, as I mentioned, the first night with a quick song by Idina Menzel. And then we'll go into several others. Monday is a salute to Prince with "The Revolution," Sheila E. Morris Day and the Time. And I understand that it might be the original time. Dessa, the Suburbs, it steals. Sunday is Gospel Day. And we, we, this is really just the first group. We'll probably have, over the course of the week, over 50 entertainers on Nicollet Mall on the stage. Very short concerts. It will be cold, but they're coming back and they're performing outside because of Jimmy and Terry. Really, it, it's, it's hard to, to have people perform outside in the winter. Each night, we've asked our Native American community to become involved, and they are bringing different groups to drum down the sun between 4:30 and 5:00. When the sun sets, our Native American youth will drum down the sun. We have a wonderful group of dancers, all local, that were selected to create a Bold North dance, and they'll dance every night to close the street between 9:00 and 10:00. and they'll dance every night to close the street between nine and ten. And there are selected high school and college drum corps that will perform also during the week. I mentioned a little bit ago, Super Bowl Experience. This really is an amazing event. There'll be photo ops, the Marty trophies there, the rings are there. You'll see lots of players. There's locker rooms, there's simulated games. And again, the NFL will do several nonprofit events for Minneapolis children inside experience during the week. One other element of Super Bowl Live is the media. And we have several large national organizations that will be on Nicollet Mall for ten days, which is a wonderful opportunity to promote the city, because they're all looking for content. We have CNN, we have ESPN, we have NFL Network, NBC, and then, of course, our local affiliates will be on Nicollet Mall. We published a few weeks ago, Know Before You Go, which is a great guide. It lives on our website. It's available for anyone who wants it. It's updated constantly regarding traffic routes, parking options, public transportation, rideshare, skyways, and the airport, et cetera. So know that that's there, and we're happy to answer any questions. Some of you already know, we're happy to go talk to building owners and so on and help them through the process of understanding the Super Bowl. So that's a very top-line, very much an overview, but you have the picture now. And with that, I'll turn it over to Pat.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. As you know, the city hosts hundreds of events every year. We do have a question or comment from Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was actually regarding the previous presentation, but maybe it would be addressed going forward. But my question was about how the businesses that are parts of these events would be impacted, so particularly along Nicollet Mall, where a lot of the businesses have been. You know, we've had construction there for quite a while. Is there any impact that they would have to their hours' operation or access to their businesses during concerts or other events?
Let me start, and maybe Maureen wants to have a few words about this too. The host committee has engaged the downtown business community especially, but also other businesses and property owners around the three major areas where we have issued block of permits, around the convention center for NFL experience or Super Bowl experience, all up and down Nicollet Mall. Each one of the business owners, and especially restaurants, that are going to be right in front of and in some ways participating in Super Bowl Live. Many of them have existing permits that allow the use of their sidewalk throughout the year. And so the host committee and its planners have been talking to each one of those businesses about what's going to happen in front of their business, the expected pedestrian flow, traffic, not only to get their businesses supplied, but their employees to work. That's why this Know Before You Go is so important, because businesses, and frankly, the city as a major employer downtown, has had questions from its own employees about, how do we get to work? Can we park in the places where we normally want to? And so all of those kinds of things are important to communicate to people who work downtown, people who visit downtown regularly, and the visitors who are going to be here too. And then lastly, the areas and the businesses and the employers around US Bank Stadium have all been canvassed and talked to about street closures, especially over there, and when they will occur. You can imagine that the employers, such as the county around the hospital and the medical examiner's office, have been intricately a part of the planning work on street closures and traffic and transportation, have been very important to those things. Many of these employers, especially the hotels, restaurants, and folks in the hospitality business can't wait for this to start. This is a boon. This event will be fabulous for their business. But there are others that are equally concerned about, how do I get customers to my business? How do I get my employees? How do I get my suppliers? So those kinds of questions have been raised and answered, and I think especially the host committee has done a good job of reaching out to them. There are regular events that they hold for the businesses, especially up and down Nicollet Mall, in relation to Super Bowl Live. Maureen, have I anything else? I hope that covers that. You may still hear from others about concerns that they may have, especially about transportation and parking. And there may also be public safety concerns that they have. But there's been a considerable outreach that the host committee largely has sponsored. So...
Councilmember Bender?
Yes.
And then just a quick follow-up. Thank you for that. It's very helpful. I wondered if the host committee or the city has then done outreach more broadly to our business community about how folks who have businesses outside of downtown might help benefit from this international event and all the visitors that are coming to town, and what outreach has been done or could be done, you know, outside that core?
Sure, maybe Maureen can speak better to that.
Well, we've really been meeting with people for three years to talk about the opportunities. We've spoken to many, many, many different groups, business groups, business associations, to get them involved. So I think probably totally, we've spoken to fifty or sixty different business organizations over the past three years and said, you know, here are the opportunities. Here, I ought to go about it in the initial, to try to get them involved if they qualified for our Business Connect program, but very much an outreach on a regular basis.
We also have a comment or question from Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just had a question about how you're getting information out to the vendors and contractors about our labor standard regulations here, the new minimum wage law especially, or maybe it's just about wage theft?
Let me speak to that. I should introduce Brittany Allen, who she and I are the principal folks at the city who are coordinating other city departments' efforts and have been the go-between between the city coordinator's office and the host committee. The city's website, as it relates to especially those regulatory items, have been highlighted in the city's website that supports this event and the host committee's website that's linked to the city's website. So questions that have come up about city permits, city regulatory actions are, should be well-known to folks who regularly do business here and who are going to be doing business here temporarily as a result of an event of this magnitude. So the city has taken extra steps to make those requirements known to those businesses that are going to be doing things here, especially to those businesses that don't regularly do business here. And I know Brittany has taken lots of questions and has been sort of the city's concierge to direct people to the right places to get answers to those questions.
Appreciate that, and hopefully you can talk to Civil Rights and maybe Communications or other people who are working on how to get the word out there. I know we have lots of businesses that we need to keep informed. This is just a part I thought of.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may be jumping ahead right now, and if that's the case, that's fine. And I'll just wait around for the topic. But are we going to be discussing the light rail and its use at some point?
Public Works will take that on. That, of course, is operated by Metro Transit, so we can take their questions or see what the nature of your questions are. I think we may be somewhat limited on what we can do there, but we'll certainly take that up when it comes to Public Works.
And when you say "public" when it comes to Public Works, you mean like today in the discussion?
Today, in this discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So major events like this and other events, the city provides infrastructure, public safety, transportation, all of its regulatory apparatus to ensure safety of both citizens and visitors and businesses that are here. What's so unusual about this event is its magnitude. Both its attention nationally and internationally with media and just the sheer size of it requires, has required additional resources on the city's part, which the host committee is paying us for. One of those is making sure that we have enough public safety resources. And so this event of this size has required us to reach out well beyond our own resources, and Chief Rondo will speak to that. Additionally, we know that this event is going to require considerable coordination across many jurisdictions on many issues. And so you'll also hear about our multi-agency command center for public safety. The city is going to stand up its emergency operations center, and there will be other emergency operations center in the region that will be stood up too, to coordinate any needed resources well beyond Minneapolis's boundaries. So let me, here's a quick list of, our internal joke here is that every city department except the assessor has been involved in Super Bowl planning. He would like to be, and we haven't found a role for him yet, but I can assure you that virtually everybody else has been involved with this planning work. Let me turn it over to Chief Rondo to talk a little bit about our public safety preparations, and then Public Works will come and speak about transportation and hopefully get to Councilmember Frye's question.
Chair Johnson, committee members. So first, I'd like to say that this is truly, it takes everyone within the city enterprise, and so we're very fortunate as a city, certainly me as chief of police, to work so closely with our folks, whether it's regulatory services, our MECC, fire, Public Works. We're at a good point here. Overview of public safety, how Super Bowl is going to impact our city. Super Bowl is considered a SEAR, S-E-A-R, one-level event. That is Special Events Assessment Rating. That is the highest rating that the federal Department of Homeland Security gives this event. This event will bring in more federal assets, support and resources to Minneapolis than ever before, and partly because of just the complexities that is involved with this planning. We do have a federal coordinator assigned to Minneapolis. He has been with us since the beginning of the planning. This person has been with, this agent has been with us from the beginning and making sure that in terms of coordinating those federal assets and resources, that everything remains in place and that we have that in place for us. Those federal assets and resources are at no cost to the city of Minneapolis. While Minneapolis Police Department is the lead law enforcement agency, this truly is a Minnesota event because of the size and scope. We have been very fortunate to have many other resources from across our great state, from other law enforcement agencies that have stepped up to the plate to help make this an absolutely friendly, safe, and welcoming environment, from as far north as Ely, Minnesota Police Department, to far south as Rochester Police Department. So the city of Minneapolis will be indoctrinated with a lot of our public safety partners from around the state. As I mentioned, we will be coordinating with our local, state, and federal resources in all capacities, whether it's peace officers on Nicollet Mall or whether it's through intelligence gathering. We will have a robust public safety coordination. I've been signing joint powers agreements from a lot of these agencies. As I said, we have ample resources in terms of the law enforcement agencies that will be providing support here in Minneapolis. All of our peace officers who are going to assist from the local, state, and federal will be having an orientation. They will certainly know that the mission and vision for the Minneapolis Police Department is we want every single person out there in uniform to be holding themselves to the highest level of integrity, to making sure that they're friendly, approachable. There's already orientation videos that have been conducted. We really want to stress the respect in making sure that our residents, our visitors, our guests are really treated in the best, most professional way there is. With that, I just want to say that there are a couple of key points for me as chief of police here. This event, as great in scope and scale as it will be, this event will not negatively impact our 911 response for our four hundred thousand residents. We will have enough, and we've ensured that there's enough law enforcement presence for the event that it does not have any negative impact on our 911 service. We will continue, as the Minneapolis Police Department, we will continue to ensure that our community members certainly have their constitutionally First Amendment speech and assembly is there so that folks can gather if they need to demonstrate or protest. They will be able to do so, and we will provide for the safety of any sorts of demonstrations that should occur. Also, there's been a lot of conversation about the impact of our homeless population. We are very sensitive to that. All law enforcement personnel that will be assigned to this will be in this orientation. We've already had volunteers that have packed over two thousand trifles that will list all of our city resources in terms of homeless shelters, social service agencies. At every briefing, a training of every day leading up to the Super Bowl, they will be briefed and they're to look out for our homeless population to make sure that they are safe, that they are warm, and that they will have Emergency 1-800 numbers, St. Stephen's Street Outreach, that they can call if they encounter any of our homeless population that needs services. And that will be emphasized each and every day. That is a kind of a thirty-thousand-foot overview, but we're looking, again, we have the resources in play, and we're very fortunate, again, that as we started this planning process, that we have so many great partners from our enterprise that will be assisting us in this effort.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions, kind of to the theme of how we're balancing making sure people are safe and secure with the work we've been doing to build community trust in policing and the sort of visual impact of security in the community. So to that end, a couple of questions I had were, will the officers and law enforcement from these different levels of government be wearing their regular-issued uniforms from their, you know, home organization? And what do those look like? And do we anticipate any issues with camouflage or kind of imagery that people in the community might feel uncomfortable with seeing downtown?
Chair Johnson, Councilmember Bender. So all of these, I would like to fit Ely, Minnesota Police, with our uniforms, but all of them will, and part of it is the Minnesota feel that this is a Minnesota event, so they will be wearing their individual department uniforms. We have asked, as a city, for the assistance of our National Guard, partly because of the size and scale. Previous Super Bowl cities that have hosted this, they've had agencies that have had five thousand-plus officers, so they were able to manage that security apparatus just with their police agency. We certainly are asking for the assistance of others. So in relationship to the National Guard, they will certainly have their standard uniform, but they will not be acting in the capacity of enforcement, and they will be teamed up. We will have Minneapolis Police in these spots where there's other, whether it's from Ely, Minnesota, or National Guard, they will be there. Our folks will be there to assist if anything should arise, orientate them to our community. So, and a lot of this is going to be covered during those daily debriefings as well as the orientation videos that we send out. And I've been also reaching out to, there's a couple of questions that were mentioned earlier about, I think Councilmember Bender, you mentioned about our commercial properties. Actually, this morning, I met with BOMA, our Commercial Real Estate Properties Association, to listen to them, whether it's traffic flows, congestions, any issues that they may have. Kind of the good thing also is that the ten days leading up to it, we will have sort of a dry run to see how our transportation flows are, if there's any public safety concerns, so that we can correct those real-time.
And then my second question was about the work that we've done to identify and acknowledge that racial profiling has been a problem in our city in the past and worked to correct it. And how will our department, as sort of the lead agency here, be working with all of the different folks from around the state and these different organizations to make sure that, you know, either in the secure areas, or particularly in all of downtown, or the areas around the events, that we'll be making sure that we're not participating in profiling folks or, you know, limiting regular access to our city in the downtown area?
Chair Johnson, Councilmember Bender. So as part of the orientation, we want every agency that's coming in to have a footprint in our city to understand the significance of our procedural justice work. We also are having conversations and had conversations with... We've also are having conversations and had conversations with Director Corbell from Civil Rights. There's going to be informational sessions going out where we do not want any, we want this to be again, a very welcoming, friendly. We do not want to have one event distract us from the important work of building trust that we need to do. All of our supervisors and commanders know that that's the, that's the, the relationship that we need to have during this event and so we will be monitoring and that as well. The other thing, again, because most of these outside agencies will have specific Super Bowl related activities, the, the vast majority of our 911 normal service response will be from our Minneapolis Police Department. So.
It's Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to briefly add on to councilmembers, Councilmember Bender's questions, which were, I think, the right ones and sort of reiterate a point that our chief made, perhaps just in a different way, which is this. So with regard to the National Guard, both Mayor Hodges and I requested them, given that this is a pretty significant security event. And yes, the National Guard will, will be wearing different uniforms. It is the, their classic, it's green. I'm not sure if it's technically camo or fatigue, but it's definitely green, right?
Chair Johnson, Councilmember Fry, that's correct.
And then the second piece that our chief brought up was that the, although they are there and they are in more military-like uniforms, and I will say, they, they will not be involved at all in the enforcement. And that's a really important point that our Minneapolis Police Department is still tasked with the, with the requirement of actually doing the work, whereas the National Guard will be there to provide assistance, especially if some additional security threat occurs.
Chair Johnson, to Councilmember Fry, in absolutely, and even if in the event, there are situations or dynamics that present themselves near the footprint of the National Guard, for example, demonstrations or protests, we have contingency plans where they would be removed from that situation and we would utilize our Minneapolis Police, whether it's by cops or those officers who've had relationships in terms of peacefully and safely managing any types of demonstration. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barnes.
As the emcee to this, to this event, Robin Hutchinson.
Thank you, Pat. Mr. Chair, members of the committee, I'll speak briefly about our preparations for traffic and circulation for the pre-events and event. A few notes before I show some maps. These discussions have been happening for about a year. We've been working with all of our partners in transportation as well as the host committee and our partner departments within the city. Our goal is to maintain access for those who live here, who work here, for people who are traveling to the downtown to experience the events. We have to make some compromise in order to host a big event, but our main goal is to keep people moving and to make sure that everybody can get where they need to go, regardless of whatever mode that takes. So a quick note before I move to traffic is to talk about winter. It's winter today. We had a little bit of snow and we are preparing our snow contingency plans, snow and ice contingency plans, to be able to handle whatever comes our way. And that means for the entire city, serving the entire city at the level of service we always do and also making our downtown shine and keeping it accessible. We'll be bringing in an extra shift. We'll be doing a tremendous amount of preparatory work on the surfaces of our streets so that we can handle whatever comes our way in terms of weather and we will be nimble and we will be able to tackle whatever comes our way and we will communicate. So the very best resource we have to explain our work in traffic and circulation is the Know Before You Go document and it's not too, we can't emphasize this enough, this is our best communication tool to explain the work that's gone into traffic and circulation. So there's been years of outreach, we've heard about that. This is the best plan that we can come up with and the best way to communicate it and our goal is to minimize impact and maximize the fun. I don't know who wrote that, but I love that. This is the community's and our one stop hub for information to keep this flowing and So we are encouraging people to visit the website. Here in the website, we have each of the downtown closures outlined as well as all the options to, to get around and, and as well, how do you get around when it's cold out? How do you dress? And that's probably my favorite part of the entire Know Before You Go. In the downtown associated with this large event, we have three areas of activity, three places where you will see closures of our streets. The first is around Super Bowl Live. We anticipate these closures to be between three and four weeks and we have minimized the closure, red shows closure. So we have Niclet, a portion of the Niclet Mall as well as 8th Street, the One Cross Street, which will remain closed. The other streets will remain open and flowing. Now, in a public safety emergency, if, if it becomes overwhelmed with pedestrians or there's another reason to close particular cross streets, they can be done on a temporary basis that may happen, that will be done with discretion. But by and large, we anticipate that cross streets will be flowing and we have picked the major cross street to, to close in order to create more space for the event. Second area of downtown where we will see some closures is around the Fan Experience Event at the Convention Center. Again, about three weeks here, more minimal closures. This is to secure a perimeter and we anticipate honestly not a lot of disruption here and especially if we communicate in advance. Then of course, the third area, probably our most extensive closures are around the event site itself. There are, as you know, there will be a secure perimeter that will take some space on our streets to do that. We have varying timeframes of closures. We try to keep our cross streets open and flowing for as long as possible, closing certain areas only when absolutely needed. Here we are being very careful to communicate. We have some closures that will affect our exit from downtown. We have negotiated to the degree we can and will now need at this point to shift to communicating alternate routes, the best way to move in and out of the city. I'll address now, I think there was a question about transit and I think I could be proactive here and say that we have worked very, very closely with all of our agencies, Metro Transit included. What was most important to us as a city is that there is a plan to get people where they need to go. We are aware of Metro Transit's plans to provide busing and bridging to be sure that on any day during this event, that people have access to whether it's jobs or schools or anywhere they need to go during the event, during the 10-day lead-up and on the day of the event. That is all communicated in Know Before You Go. Again, back to that tool that we have to continue to communicate the closures and the best way to get around the city. With that, I will stand for any questions. Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Hutchinson, thank you for the update. As you might know, I probably know more about what's going on than most, given that a lot of this is in the ward that I represent. I want to express a concern with regard to the very broad timeframe surrounding our inability and unwillingness to issue construction permits during this time. You know, we're bumping up against a problem at the federal government with regard to the tax bill and trying to get affordable housing projects under construction and they need to be closed and under construction. I'll just give you the example, in my ward, we have 188 units of affordable housing going in at 15th and Niclet and they asked for simple permission to disconnect their gas line because the buildings were vacant and they were told no. So essentially, we're asking them to keep the gas on and buildings on their property that are sitting vacant because they can't get permission to disconnect a gas line. And what we're hearing is if we allow for exceptions, for one, we're going to have to start allowing for exceptions for all. I guess what I would say is we have to have some out of the box thinking that is not an all or nothing point of view. I have a really good relationship with your staff and I don't want to step in and say, you know, darn it, issue that frickin' permit, which is why I'm bringing it up publicly. But I do think that when you have a project at 15th and Niclet, which is nowhere near where this is, and all they're asking for is two feet of the sidewalk, which they're maintaining to be open to disconnect a gas line, we should be able to accommodate that kind of request. And there are more than that, but when we, we're asking contractors to get into the ground to prove their readiness to issue these tax credits, but then we're saying from the first week, I think it's already started, we have a three-month shutdown of all development within downtown and I don't think that's consistent with our values in terms of trying to be a business-friendly city and keep things moving. I don't think you want people on the street, on the sidewalk, or doing things that would otherwise impede with traffic during this super sensitive time, but there are issues that need to have a little bit more nuance and I'm hoping since Mr. Wurtis is here and you're here, you can pass on that need for nuance. There's no need for you to respond. It would take a lot for me to publicly air this concern, however, meaning I'm not getting an answer that shows any nuance up until this minute right now.
Mr. Chair and Councilmember Goodman, I would like just to take a moment to respond and say, yes, we are in the moratorium. The moratorium allows for an appeal. The appeal is considered by the city engineer, Lisa Cerny. Lisa Cerny has granted exceptions and I'd be happy to pull up this particular instance and to engage the city engineer to kick in that appeal process and see where we can show flexibility. Thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Hutchinson, the groundbreaking for this project is on the 19th, which is next week. Yet we won't be actually breaking any ground embarrassingly and I'll note for my colleagues who are aware of this, this is 44 of the units are three-bedroom units for families. The longer we delay their construction, the longer families don't have somewhere to live.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnes.
Mr. Chair, members, that concludes our prepared remarks. We will stay in touch with you as things change, as there may be, although we are not planning on any other requests for your actions, but I'm sure there will be other reports that we'll make to you, both between now and when the event occurs and then there certainly will be a review of how the event has occurred afterwards and we'll welcome your questions and participation in that.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to give you an overview and we will certainly find ways of being in touch with you between now and the event and after the event.
Thank you. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note something that a few of us have been discussing, which is that the council members who have been the main point people on this event planning are all not serving next term for one reason or another. And so I just think it's important to note there'll be a need for continuity with communication with the council, the mayor-elect's office, obviously during the transition and then into early next year. Sort of wanted to raise that up as a point.
Certainly. Good, good point. Councilmember, or Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to, sorry, Robin, I wanted to bring you back up real quick just to discuss light rail. I should have taken my cue earlier. I wanted to go through the schedule of what's happening on game day as well as the day before, as well as the reasons and the logistics for why. There, there's a couple of areas where I do have some, some concerns overall, but I wanted to make sure everybody was, was well aware of the, the present status. So light rail use, who can use it, when they can use it.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Fry, I will answer these questions to the best of my ability, not being a staff of Metro Transit.
Right. I understand this isn't you, I just wanted to relay.
I will also answer to the degree that I can and may ask for additional detail if John Wurtis has it behind me. It is my understanding that on game day, I think this is the crux issue, on game day, light rail on the blue line will be limited to only ticket holders who are attending the Super Bowl. On game day, Metro Transit will be providing buses and alternate buses to continue to provide parallel service to the light rail. Once the, in addition to that, once the perimeter is secure, that station at US Bank Stadium will not be accessible. Trains will continue through and stop at the next station and there will be bus bridges available to transport people back to where they need to go as close as possible, understanding that some of that is a secure perimeter. I don't believe there are other chain, oh, and the buses will not be operating on the Niclet Mall, beginning actually fairly soon, in a couple of weeks, those buses will come off to make way for Super Bowl Live. Outside of that, I'm not aware of any substantive changes to the transit system. Those are the main changes that will be taking place.
And the, the explanation, and I know, Ms. Hutchinson, this is, this is not your decision nor are you directly involved, but do you know the explanation as to why the light rail would only be accessible to ticket holders on game day?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Fry, it is my understanding that it is an issue of security, that they will be magging and bagging at the origin point of light rail, which is the Mall of America. So everything will be swept and cleaned prior to passengers stepping onto the train and that will be considered a, a secure train. I'm getting all kinds of nodding that this is the case.
And the, the concern about having a secure train, even though the train isn't stopping at the particular light rail station in front of the stadium, is that someone may, we, we would want to check them ahead of time so that something doesn't happen when the train goes by the stadium? Is that the reason? Okay.
That's what we understand from Metro Transit, yes.
Councilmember Fry, Director Hutchinson and colleagues, I talked fairly extensively with Met Transit about this. Ward 12 has the most light rail stops of any ward and it's going to have a major impact on the 30,000-plus daily riders and just to add a couple of points, that they were told essentially by Homeland Security that no, you cannot run the trains at all. And they worked very hard to get to the point where Homeland Security is willing to set up a checkpoint at Mall of America. I believe it's Stadium Village as well and that they will not be stopping at any light rail stations along the way. One of the points I brought up to Met Transit, which I was glad to see them implement, is that this is a inconvenience, a significant inconvenience for the daily riders and the buses are something that they use when they take down light rail lines or they have maintenance or disruptions, but that it's still, because this is a, in a private event, though it is also of global significance and so it's beyond your typical private event, that this isn't a typical disruption either and they have agreed to provide free transit rides on those buses at all the light rail stations and that is being reimbursed to taxpayers through the Super Bowl Host Committee. And so I appreciate Met Transit's work on that and understand the, the security concerns. So I hope that's helpful.
It is. Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Chair. Yeah. And thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Can I just add one little footnote to the Metro Transit discussion, which I think is an important one for city leaders to hear. We've also heard from the NFL that this is an unusually transit-oriented Super Bowl experience. They have not previously allowed external baggage and visitor check-in on game day for people with tickets to the games outside of the perimeter, the security perimeter around where the game is typically held. So to have people be checked in at the Mall of America and then taken by train or at TCF Bank Stadium or at our Convention Center is a very unusual practice. The NFL likes it because it provides additional means of security, but they have, they have been supportive of this and it allows us frankly to show off our transit system in a way that other cities either don't have or aren't willing to do. So our hats really are off to Metro Transit for working through what really would have been a, a fairly major shutdown of the green, of the blue line on game day. And now it's going to be open and it'll be used by people with tickets and of course, everybody else who needs to get someplace by transit that day will be afforded a chance to do that.
Mr. Barnes, do you have an update on the possibility of a transit strike by our transit employees, our workers? That would be certainly disruptive to.
Mr. Chair, I don't. Mr. Chair, I don't.
No, okay. I just wanted to point that out, that that's another piece in play here, and a risk certainly, and I'm sure something that the, that folks are taking into account with planning, so. Any additional questions or discussion? Well, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate the thoroughness of it and bringing forward these important updates to the council and to the public. I'll just add my comment, Skoll Vikings, so hopefully will be playing in the Super Bowl, which will just add yet another complicating factor and risk for all of the folks planning, but that's classic Minnesota fashion for our sports teams to do that, just adds to the buildup. So with that, seeing no further comments, I'm going to go ahead and move receiving and filing of this presentation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, that carries. Thank you all very much. We have one more discussion item, the council calendar. For expedience here, I'm going to go ahead and move this draft calendar with a staff direction to modify the Committee of the Whole times to 1:30 PM, and I am happy to speak to that if any colleagues are interested in the reasoning. And we also have our clerk with us today, so that motion is out there. I'll see if Casey Carl wants to make any comments, and then, nope, not seeing any comments on that, so I'll just comment on the reason for that change is, we are members of the Metropolitan Emergency Services Board, which is one of the many committees that council members and elected officials and representatives of the city are appointed to. That is an organization that is made up of counties from across the metro, and next year, Minneapolis is presiding over that organization, and we want to make sure that we're being responsive to it. And I know that over the past year, the timing of Committee of the Whole has conflicted with that quite significantly, and after talking with the organization about trying to move their meetings, it quickly becomes complicated when you have dozens of county commissioners, all with separate conflicts as well, and so it seems like an opportune time, given the significance of that seat, to just make this change on the calendar moving forward. So any discussion on this draft calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, that motion carries. That, we have our reports of committee, will be brief because of the time here, but we only had two committees for this special cycle, so with that, CD RS with Chair Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. CD RS is bringing forward 13 items for approval on Friday. One of the main reasons we met was because of two projects, actually three total, the Albright Town Homes, the Riverside Town Homes, which are items one and two, which were moving forward kind of ahead of schedule as a result of the problem at the federal level with the tax credits. I'll also note that we are going to agree to transfer 100% of our remaining 2017 bonding authority to the City of St. Paul because they can use those bonds enclosed before the end of the year. Should we then dodge the bullet of losing the tax credits, the City of St. Paul will issue those bonds back to us so we can continue to fund projects that are on our pipeline. So that would include actually items 12, as well as items one and two. Item one is a final approval. Item two, there are a number of items to move forward, but this would at least get the bonds dedicated to the project. If we do lose our entitlement authority, it will happen immediately, so there will be no credits for 2018. Items three, four, and five are liquor business and gambling licenses. Item six is the East Town Apartments bond issuance. In the third ward, this is the same issue with regard to our entitlement bond allocation. Items seven, eight, nine, and 10 are contract extensions or changes for things like document storage, as well as software services and things that needed to be cleaned up at year end. Item 11 are some simple changes to our 2016 and 17 rehab support program and our contracts with Minnesota Housing. Item 12 is the bonding authority we discussed, and item 13 are amendments to the city's unified housing policy. I'll note that we agreed to make those amendments to the unified housing policy as a result of the Section 8 anti-discrimination ordinance that passed, and we were able to take up some concerns from the Harrison neighborhood at the same time. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions on items one through 13.
Not seeing any questions. Thank you for that report. Moving on to Zoning and Planning Committee with Chair Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have four items from zoning and planning. Item number one was rezoning and vacation for NICO properties related to the 35W Transit Access Project. Item number two is a rezoning for an affordable housing project. We sent this forward without recommendation to explore the opportunity for retaining industrial living overlay district zoning here, instead of changing it to the C-3A that had been recommended. Staff is working on that, and I know that council members, Reich and Gordon, are talking with each other and with staff about the difference there between the two zoning classifications. Item three is appointments to our Heritage Preservation Commission, and item four is a street vacation. Thanks.
See, not seeing any questions. Thank you for their report. With that, that's the final Committee of the Whole for the term, and so I wanted to thank staff for all their work supporting this committee, my colleagues for being a part of it. With that, we are adjourned.